Now, this is only... The problem is the problem is right there.
Yes.
What is... This is the total of all the CIPs?
That's what I had, that's what I was given.
We probably should have been looking at a breakdown on that, and how would we get that?
I'm not gonna see if I might have it. I don't think so. It wouldn't be an expense detail, it would be in... I don't know, where does it go then?
Should be under expense de... you know, whatever the expense, you want to total, you mean? I was kind of half listening. Yeah, you want to total, it should be under an expense for CIP.
Summary report, you think?
Yeah. On what?
In the summary report?
Summary, yeah, should be.
Oh, I don't understand.
We should have had him around for the day.
Yes.
Well, you know what, if we can't get full information, we're gonna have to wait.
Yep.
Why don't we try something else?
See, I could...
Numbers haven't changed yet.
You can take a look there, and maybe that, you could be helpful for us, thank you. If you'd like to see us get them, wouldn't we?
I think so. And then I'd end up going all through it again tonight, but it's... It should work out. So... Probably wait, see if we can get better information on that one.
I think it's showing you a serious problem that it got going on personally.
Okay.
Could be a trio problem, but... Alright, so anyways, what it's showing is CIP for fire.
Yeah.
Uh, has only forty-three thousand nine eighty-five in it.
I see it, I'm up for, um, forty-three thousand what?
Nine eighty-five. It's saying... Then you have CIP for buildings. It's saying that has nine thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. There were any motions to spend out of that fund? When ten thousand comes over, why would it be nine thousand nine eighty-five? And it's been ongoing for a couple of years, that doesn't make sense.
Is there fifteen dollars missing?
There's more than that missing.
Fifteen dollars.
But even just yet.
But even yet, how does it go missing?
Yep. So, and then you have your CIP for pavement, paving.
Yeah.
The hundred, out of the hundred and fifty, that was, uh, says they only had nineteen thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-five cents left.
Yeah, what was that number again?
Nineteen thousand...
Three.
Three, three, one.
Okay.
Eighty-five cents.
Paving.
And then under bridges, which would never spent anything out of, it's saying that there was only four thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars left on this expense summary.
Forty-nine eighty-five.
That's totally wrong.
It's not right.
It should be something like two hundred and... well, it was, my God. Yeah, this one going on for years, that should be all added up, right?
Where's the money?
It's not, I think that's, he's gonna have to go back in the trio and...
What was that last category you did, uh?
Bridges. Oh.
Bridges.
Bridges.
Okay, thanks.
One eleven, one eleven is when he got us, just gave us this.
Yeah, why is that money going out of all these accounts?
Where did it go? Fifteen dollars, I mean, that's really cool.
That fire company paid on the other account in it?
Yep.
Fires should have, yeah, that should have been a different number, but... This, well, that second, that second account was what, built, building?
Yeah.
Building...
He never spent anything out of that.
Buildings and...
Town buildings, right?
Yeah.
Repairs, it should have been a ten thousand dollar town.
Repairs over ten thousand, yeah.
And some asphalt down on the river though.
Yeah, I don't know what you guys signed off on for paving, I know you did some.
Yep. So that would have taken out of that.
If the other numbers are wrong, I would question the ones that seem to even be right, let's make sure that they're all right.
Yep. Bridges was another ten thousand dollars, right?
Five.
Five thousand. So that, again, another fifteen bucks going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's crazy.
Yeah, so what's going on with that?
Jordan's gonna have to pull a new sheet.
Not big deal, it's a night. We'll talk about it on your key, because they all were numbers.
Is he coming back?
Nope.
So how's he gonna pull a new sheet?
I don't know, he has another engagement.
Just getting me out again.
No wonder people are frustrated. Not without somebody who prints the stuff up for us, somebody knows how.
Oh, let me go through the computer, I have to.
What's your wife doing today, I'll pay her some extra money.
She doesn't know on the budgetary side of things.
Okay.
Do you, can you go in and get it?
He doesn't, he doesn't work in that system, do you?
No. I don't, I don't know anything about trio.
Looking, I've never, no, I've never been there.
Oh, tri- it's trio?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll try and, of course, have a CFO about that.
About trio?
Yeah. Use the system, I saw it yesterday. Next school.
Really?
Maybe I'll take it.
That's interesting.
The quilting shop moved, it's next to the hometown mobile, I didn't know that.
I was looking for a secretary, put your resume in.
What, use my workers comp, lose my workers comp check?
Oh, there you go, see? Sorry.
I told you, I do it free.
Sorry, I go off it.
I do it free. Just can't pay me.
I don't think there's anything I can do.
No, I don't have access to that.
Again.
Trio. As a selectman, do you have access to that?
No.
They don't work in trio either, no. I wish I could have that.
Yeah, that's funny, I just saw it yesterday.
That's interesting.
No, it's on my iPad, it's not on my phone.
Alright, well...
Let's move on, so we table on this.
You can still... Go on to the next thing.
You can still say what you want to put in it.
Yeah.
That's what you guys need to do.
Yeah.
Cause you're gonna have to meet again anyway, on budget committee, you could vote. So you could actually, they can say, I guess we're gonna put in it.
I can tell them what to put in.
Meantime, get the numbers back, and like, you're gonna vote, you could just say, here, this is what's in there.
That's a good idea, that's a good idea.
We get any way to tell how much was in fire? There wasn't a fifty thousand dollar account, was there?
It was over fifty thousand.
It was, for a while there, wasn't it?
We put two fifties in there.
Yeah, I thought so.
The last I knew, it was eighty-three. Now, I don't know if anything got spent out of that since then, or not. The last I knew, it was eighty-three.
I had Jeanette's full numbers before I went out, before she went out, so I knew exactly what was in every account. So I had some real numbers, so I still have that at home.
You do.
And you can build from there. Other than that, I don't know what's happened since.
I was gonna say, that means that fire one's changed a lot.
Everybody Paul said, you bought the, uh...
We bought a truck.
You bought forestry truck.
We bought a truck for twenty-two. That was around twenty-two thousand that we paid for that truck.
I, I don't, I wouldn't guess, I'd just try to figure out, I guess, at this point, where you were.
Well, maybe, figure on you, so just figure out what you want to put in it.
You should have end of year numbers. I don't know where, where all those numbers are, but you should have your, your numbers for last year, the end of the fiscal year. By now, you definitely should have, the auditors...
But we can put any number for coming here.
Yeah, right, you can.
Because it's all over.
Budget committee wants to see what's in there now, so they can... Make an educated decision.
There's still only four, sixty-five thousand, there's some change on that. I would say sixty-six thousand on that, on the fire one, by adding the twenty-two from the truck. So there must be more there too.
Rough guess, I mean... Betty, I'm, I'm nobody in all this, but I mean, rough guess, you guys might want to talk about meeting next Tuesday, Wednesday for that vote.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have to, I told, they, they thought they were gonna vote tonight, I said, you can't vote tonight, I don't even... I don't have the actual numbers, I'm not voting, and...
No, cause all your numbers that you're doing, you need to go back to...
And come back, and then we, we vote, the voting is just a formality of...
If you guys say, hey, this is what we want to put in those lines, then Dale can fill in those numbers.
It's pretty hard for us to say what we want to put in the lines, if we ever even got anything to tell us what we had in the line. I'm guessing, well, maybe you've got...
I guess from a, from a selectman's point of view, why would you change it from what's been going on the last three years and plus?
I wouldn't. So what did we put in the last three years?
Fifty, ten, a hundred and fifty and ten.
Yeah.
That matches the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen request numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Right. That works.
So it was two hundred and twenty thousand?
Yeah.
Now the question though, if I may throw it in there, what are you doing with highway? You wanna add one for highway? To start building an equipment fund for highway. At some point, if nothing else, you have a, a backhoe up there that will need to be replaced. So... Good chance now, start a CIP fund that's starting to put some money away. You guys are, I'm doing a lot of talking, I probably shouldn't be, but, you're ninety-three thousand dollars apart right now. Budget committee says this, you guys say this. If two numbers go on that ballot, you're gonna have a lot of explaining to do with people. So is there a place, I'm asking, I asked it last night, is there a place where you guys can meet in the middle? And is the CIP maybe that place?
I think that is the place. Denver, do you agree?
I do agree, and I think that the, uh, the agreement last night seemed to be that everybody would be okay with some of that money going into CIP account for equipment.
Those that are concerned about wasted expenditures or whatever, if you're, if you're locking up X number of dollars to say it only can be spent for this, I'm sure that they'd be... Feel better about it, you know? You might come closer to what you want for highway as a selectman.
That seemed to be the feeling last night, was that if, that people would, would agree to some of that money going towards equipment.
What do you think we need for equipment, I don't know, um, I'm trying to think of what new equipment costs, I, I know who old equipment costs.
You got, what kind of equipment do you want?
What, what, they need, they're gonna, they're gonna need another backhoe they need?
They shouldn't need a backhoe for a while, but...
No.
They'll need one time, I believe they need one.
I mean, and that was thirty-five grand, thirty-five inches, whatever, so, I mean, you know you're gonna need at least that, and that's what it was, you know? So, you know, you're looking at trucks, you're looking at...
Fifty. So at least seventy-five thousand, that should make everybody happy, shouldn't it?
I'd say seventy-five all day long, because we're ninety-three thousand dollars apart.
If the people would go for it, if the taxpayer go for it, it's gonna be one of the separate ballot question anyway, pass or fail, it's not like you're putting them all in all together. But, that would, that would definitely put us in a place where you can start buying some equipment in a short period of time.
Right.
Cause I'm really all done with the one times myself personally, so the quicker we can get some town trucks, I'll be happy.
Absolutely.
So who's gonna pick up all the rest of this cost that we're talking about?
Two hundred and ninety-five thousand.
There's a lot of hidden costs right here, you're gonna just go, you're gonna just go buy a truck, and then we'll do what with it?
Nobody's gonna just go buy a truck.
Save money, prepare what's there.
Sounds like.
No, we're putting, they're putting money in an account where it's to save towards the purchase of equipment.
See what is needed, and then use it as, as needed.
I suggest if we're gonna put it in trucks, then we write down trucks, if we're gonna put it in anything else, if we're gonna put it in equipment, then, then it'll be equipment, and then your highway, your, uh, highway elect person will take, can take the money and spend it any way he wants.
No, he's still...
No, he can't.
Selectmen.
He still has to come to the selectman and give his proposal, and the selectman signed the check.
But he never comes here. Yeah.
Now, I understand better.
I mean, they have to get bins and everything else, and whatever he wanted.
Right.
And show necessity. Right?
Yep.
So I think seventy-five thousand would make everybody happy, but I'm, I'm one person, Denver would...
All right, so you said, well, we can present it tonight, but...
Read referendum ten, that'll give you an idea how that question would be written.
What year is this from?
It doesn't matter, let's talk about referendum ten.
Well, she went someplace different.
Would give you an idea how your highway one would be written. Purchase of equipment.
So we worded highway equipment?
Then you could, it would cover trucks, it would cover a loader, it would cover...
What, a chainsaw?
Well, you could word it so that it was purchases over X number of dollars, or whatever, but, I mean...
Yeah.
I wouldn't go chainsaws.
I would say, I would word it to say major, so that you're not purchasing it for... That's quali, that's a qualification thing, what, what I think is major...
I don't think it should be used for chainsaws and...
I don't think it would.
Okay, so you put one... Well, you can't say you don't think, cause somebody else might think differently from you by wording it.
Oh, will you?
Over, no.
You're not a selectman. With an over there of ten thousand dollars in costs and stuff like that.
Yeah. Over ten K, yeah.
Yeah, that gives you things like sweepers and things like that, for the road. Stuff you could attach to the backhoe that you have now.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
Correct, you have knowledge, I should say.
Oh, I hate them.
Okay.
I don't know how to add.
Well, what I'd like to do is just go right down, down the list here, this is all CIP stuff, right?
Yes.
So let's... The fire one is up in the air, right?
No, it goes out, goes to emergency services now. That just got transferred into emergency services, that's crossed out fire, it's called emergency services.
You're talking, as near as I can tell, we were talking a hundred and fifty thousand dollar account there before. Do we want to put back a hundred and fifty?
Not for fire, not for emergency services, it wasn't.
Cause I added up what we've done, I've taken out, adding on the, the truck that was bought. I wrote it down as twenty-two thousand, and added that to the forty-three nine eighty-five that was supposedly a balance here. And that don't, comes up to sixty-five thousand. So it's a kind, it's still kind of an odd number, so what else could have been?
Check the margin of that page. I'm not even gonna guess. That was a good one.
I don't know. On the bottom of the page.
Yeah. See differences page? Oh my God.
I don't.
Excuse me.
We won't even go there.
Excuse me, what is going on?
I'm a little sudden, I looked, and I said, oh my...
Royce, if you're looking at that, then you actually can see where fire was voted down, it's no longer a fire, CIP, it's emergency services, so that means it could be an ambulance or fire. EMS or fire. So your next line, see how it's a zero?
Yeah.
Request is a zero, that's because the town voted to shut that CIP down, transfer funds over into an emergency services, and now we added in, the request is fifty thousand.
Okay.
Next, next line down. So emergencies, it's always been fifty, you can see it here? It's always been fifty, it's just now fifty thousand for emergency services, not just for fire equipment. So, it's not a hundred and fifty, it's fifty.
Okay, so I wonder where the twenty for that truck came from?
You guys voted on it, you guys would have had to vote on it, but we didn't see it.
Wondering what was actually taken out of our account?
Yeah, but you should have had eighty-some odd thousand in there, last night you were down around thirty. It was down around thirty when I went out of here, and then you just voted in another fifty.
Fifty. It was, after the election, it was eighty-three thousand dollars.
It was in that range, yeah. And then you guys paid for the truck, so subtract the twenty-two thousand, or whatever it was, add that.
Sixty.
Sixty-one.
Should have in there, unless you voted something up.
Yeah, you put another fifty in there.
Yeah, I got sixty-five, uh, after subtracting...
Yeah.
After adding the, no, that's not right.
Should be right around sixty-one thousand in there, right?
Well, I was gonna say, the other thing I, they need to discuss, that I know Chief has brought up, is having a new CIP. Uh, or, or whatever, a new question, that part of the revenues are going in to the, for the ambulance, you already got a CIP for equipment, so... Maybe you eliminate this fifty thousand, and you put it on there that half the revenues of the ambulance go in there. That would actually be more than the fifty thousand, but it wouldn't be... It wouldn't be raising fifty, maybe coming out of the revenue on the back end, so, I mean, it's still gonna, it's one... Doesn't matter one way or the other, it's just on how it... You're gonna lose your revenues on your back end when you set the tax commitment.
Right.
General, the public doesn't understand the revenues coming in, by the end, there's, you know, as much, they help, helps. But they do understand that if you say, hey, fifty percent of what we take in for ambulance is going to replace this ambulance, oh, that sounds good.
Right. Specifically for ambulance, or for fire or ambulance?
You have to put some wording inside.
Right.
Correct?
It's supposed to...
I'm nobody. I'm just saying, I, I mean, you could put in there, but, keep it the same CIP, but instead of raising and appropriating fifty thousand towards this CIP, if you just change the question that says half of whatever the ambulance revenue is. EMS revenue is. Which, which right now is around, I'm, I'm being told, a hundred and ten.
It'd be six.
So it'd be maybe fifty-five, or as they increase, it'd be, it'd be more.
So it wouldn't have a fee?
Not a finite figure.
Yeah, it wouldn't have a finite figure, but it could still be, uh, show within the account, would be a wise thing. Currently, in the account is this.
That would have to be put on the ballot that way.
Well, I understand, I understand what you're saying correctly is, we are, we want to... For the, for the new budget, we want to put on fifty thousand dollars for EMS. We want to add that.
That's been there, so do you want to do it again?
Well, I'm, I'm figuring that with the forty-three nine eighty-five, or sixty-five nine eighty-five, whatever it is, is there still.
Well, it should be...
Should be about sixty-one.
Number four.
Right. So we want to add another fifty on top of that, this coming year, is what I'm saying.
Correct.
Okay. Well, let's make that a motion then.
Are you, are they gonna, did he understand what you're talking about?
Say it one more time.
Boy, oh boy. Can I now? Yeah, absolutely. Well, I'm making a motion that, I'm making a motion that we add fifty thousand dollars to the CP, CIP fund for EMS. Well, again, get fifty thousand in there somewhere, I'm sorry. Fifty thousand to the, to the EMS, um...
CIP.
CIP, yeah.
Total of a hundred thousand?
No.
No, fifty thousand.
Total of fifty thousand for the new year.
Okay, I got you.
Do you understand what I was saying? Did you understand what I was saying?
Did I not understand what you were saying?
No.
You're fine, we'll take it one step at a time.
Boy, oh boy, I like it when we get that easy with it.
And Paul, Paul knows, I mean, it's...
We all understand. Do you second my motion?
Yeah.
You want me voting, so it's...
So, so...
And it's all in favor.
You want to do the fifty thousand?
Put that on the ballot.
Just, just to clarify. So you want to do, you want to do the raising appropriate fifty thousand, and not half of the revenue coming in from the ambulance?
Add, to the motion, add half fifty percent of the revenues.
I wouldn't, wow, okay, you're gonna lose it both ends, you do that.
Right.
Right.
You're gonna lose it both ends, but, you know, the question, do you want to do fifty? Which if Dan says, Comstar says, I haven't seen any numbers, that they're doing a hundred and ten thousand dollars of revenue, then half of that would be fifty-five thousand dollars. Would go into the CIP.
With the fifty?
No.
No.
It's either one or the other.
Right. Either fifty or fifty percent.
Yes, it would.
Yes, I would have put it with the way you was going right.
You want to do both, because... Uh, you're gonna...
All you're doing is swapping money on half of that deal.
Because you didn't ask me why millerate went so high.
You're raising, yeah, you're raising fifty thousand, and, but the other half, but it's just a swap off from what we're already getting.
No, if you're losing it, when you set the tax commitment, when, when we set the tax commitment, okay, all your revenues for the town, codes, everybody, your revenues for the town, okay, are offsetting that mill rate. They're, they're helping, I mean, take it like a regular budget. So you're gonna give it away on both ends.
Alright. So we gotta make up our mind, what do we all want to do, do, do we want it, Mr. Nell, do we want it to be cash?
What do you mean, cash?
You want it to be from, you want it to be from the voters, from the taxes, or do you want it to be from revenue from EMS?
Well, if we get it from the voters, we have to raise it.
Right.
If we get it from the, uh...
EMS, it's gonna be...
You have to get permission to do it. If you do it from the, you know, if you do it, uh, raising appropriate fifty thousand, yes, you're getting it from the voters. If you do half of the revenues, you're still taking it from the voters, and you need permission to do that.
Because we're not...
It needs to be worded that way.
Right.
But, the difference would be, as, as they get busier, and as the town continues to expand, uh, that could be fifty-five thousand this year, could be sixty thousand next year, could be seventy thousand the year after, because it's gonna be based on what they're taking in. We've gone from the last three years, from sixty-six thousand dollars revenue, to seventy-nine, to supposedly around a hundred, a hundred and ten right now, so you're constantly going up. Because more going on, but also better attention to what's going on.
Question still to you, do you want, you want to go for the fifty thousand, or take half from the EMS? They will change the motion to be... They would take fifty percent of the fu, the funding from, how do I write, make that sound right, though, fifty percent of the funding from...
A revenue. The revenue.
Yeah, do they have any other revenues? No.
I'd just say EMS revenue.
From the EMS revenue, yeah, okay. Mary, you're alright.
And you estimate that, you're gonna get an estimate to get a total?
They should have, again, put a note for Jordan to pull those Comstock, cause you're getting them every month.
And we might add that based on Comstock? Should I do that as part of the motion?
I wouldn't, if you, I wouldn't.
No, you don't have to.
If you ever change companies for whatever, then you're stuck.
So how does that whole motion worded again? You got fifty percent of funding of the EMS?
Fifty percent of, of the revenues from EMS to be applied to a CIP, a CPI.
CIP.
Exactly, yeah. For EMS.
Vehicles.
Well, no.
Isn't, Ben, that's not a EMS veh, that's not for vehicles and major purchases, that's CIP?
I know this isn't last year, but it was for, uh, for the purpose of purchasing the equipment.
It was, so equipment, but that should stay equipment, not just...
I don't, I'd rather not attach a chip weapon to it if they want to lose the buying end. I think you should have a choice on that.
You stripped the choice away, so if you want to do that... And you're trying to limit it just to an ambulance?
If I'm saying, but...
You should do two questions. Because the town's always been continuously voting for...
Well, you're, you're taking... Didn't I, well, didn't I hear a fire truck being a big problem, because it was listed as equipment, the money was used for, used for something else?
That was because it was...
Or was it listed for a truck and not...
That was because what was put forward in the town meeting, what was said and sold to the, at the town meeting versus what ended up on the ballot, that was...
Right.
But it, but it's long since been arrested.
But it was still swapped around, and the money got...
That was years ago, I mean, probably, that was almost ten years ago. Eight years, whatever it's been.
But it just crops up in folks' minds still.
So that's why, I guess, if you want to say, this is for an ambulance...
For a purchase of...
You're gonna have a problem if you do that, because...
Towards a purchase of an ambulance.
Yeah, listen to me, though, but you're gonna have a problem, you've already created a CIP for equipment. So there's money sitting there for equipment, okay? Now, if you kill that, right? Cause you're not putting any more money back into that, it's still gonna sit there for equipment, okay? But then if you say this is gonna be for an ambulance, you technically are gonna create different anyway. So, so then you're really not putting anything in there for equipment anymore.
When I say equipment or an ambulance, or, or it is, yeah.
It should stay the same, equipment.
Is an ambulance, honestly, they're gonna need the money for it.
But that's equipment.
But that's equipment, so it could come out as...
So what we've done for, we've projected it, we've put it forward for a down payment for a fire truck.
That brings up the question is, what is a, what is that hospital bed that's in the back of that thing, and what is, what is the tire that goes on that?
That's fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, but what is the tire that goes on that, on that ambulance, is that equipment? What is a...
I don't know, we fought this round and round, I'm, I'm just a citizen.
I know. That's what the problem is, you're gonna be trying to...
You're trying to recreate the wheel, I wouldn't do that at this point.
I wouldn't either.
I'm not trying to recreate anything, it's just, what do the people want?
Put it to vote. Put on the ballot, put both questions on there, see if you vote one up, one down. Put on the ballot, put both questions on this, if you vote one up, one down.
I don't want to take up that much space.
Oh, my gosh.
They don't even know what they're voting for.
They don't, at the end of the last time, I think, they don't even know what they're voting for.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think they made it pretty clear in the last election, they know what they're voting for, they.
Mary, what did I end up with for a motion?
Well, we got one scratched out, and then all I have here is fifty percent of revenue from EMS be applied to the C I T, that's, that's all I have. I don't have the ambulance slash equipment. Because I have no idea what you guys are doing.
Stick with your fifty thousand, let's spend it in the past, leave it at that.
Do what's the easiest?
Well, chiefly if you wanted to see if you could do the, the half, half the ambulance payment, but you know, at the end of the year, just do your fifty thousand. It isn't really gonna be that much of a difference, like that battle next year.
Well, the problem is, you know, like you say, if we're gonna. What does it go for, is it gonna go for an ambulance or equipment, is there?
Don't worry, an ambulance station can.
We want to be both.
We've already answered that question a long time when that other question went on the ballot, that was, that was a year ago, two years ago.
Were they accepted or unaccepted?
By the town attorney? Accepted as.
But accepted, but by the voters.
It's been passed every year.
I need, why, I mean.
To go with the fifty thousand.
Need more than that.
And it says equipment or what?
This is, this is, their wording was only changed, instead of fire department, it was for EMS emergency services. So same question, but yeah, it says right on it to place in the capital reserve fund for the purpose of purchasing equipment, for the equipment.
All right, go with it then. I'll just word it.
Probably has your real question right here.
So, I'm sorry. I'm doing the fifty percent of.
Or the fifty thousand?
I, yeah, I, I think I'd go with a fifty, the fifty thousand right now, it's clear, it's more clear.
Can you get through it till next year?
Gonna be a lot of tired people voting too, right now, to get to the budgets.
So does that mean fifty percent of revenues from EMS slash fire department be applied to C I T for?
And don't forget.
Equipment?
No.
So, yeah, that's.
Scratch the other one, I don't even have a new motion here.
Oh, is it?
We already voted, Royce.
So fifty thousand?
No, we didn't vote yet.
Yeah, they voted, and then they said, then he tried to make a new motion, decided not to make that new motion.
Go back to.
Right, go back to the original motion for fifty thousand.
Addendum to the motion.
Oh, Jesus.
Ah, Lord.
Okay, fifty thousand, right?
Right.
Fifty percent of fifty thousand?
No, just fifty thousand.
Is going under emergency services.
Right, equipment.
But if we go fifty-five, we can change it next year, right? Ben?
Yeah.
If we go fifty-five, you can change it next year.
Why do you have a motion, so, I, why does that make a difference?
It doesn't, at this point, your motion's on the table. For fifty thousand.
Number ten, that is the question last year that passed, and that's the exact question that's on.
You'd like to hear that out loud?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Shall the town of Lebanon vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars to place in the capital reserve fund for the purpose of purchasing equipment for the emergency services department? That's what we want to write right there, and hand that to Mary until you have it right.
That's in English.
Thank you, Ben Thompson.
All right.
Thank you, Selectman Thompson.
Sometimes it's, uh.
It's a selectman always.
Apparently.
And that's, that's the motion, now, no other motion before that.
Now you need a second.
Written as a question would be. Dana?
So you're leaving it open as to?
No.
No, fifty thousand.
We just wrote a question, just the way it's written, we're voting to write the question just the way that was written in the previous book there.
Purchasing equipment for the E, EMS.
It's what it was last year, fifty thousand.
Yeah, the last year's.
Purchasing equipment?
Right.
The C I P fund.
Okay, I thought it was.
With the C, yes.
Not specified as to what purpose.
No, but the selectmen have control over that spending.
Is that, that half, you know, if that, you go to the next one?
Did you guys raise your hands?
I think it is.
No, they, nobody seconded the motion.
No, you didn't, yeah.
Then let's vote on it.
Well, you have to second it first.
Well, you gotta second the motion, and then, yeah, second the motion, then we gotta vote, yes, it all.
Okay, good.
Now, all right.
Phew.
Municipal buildings and grounds, ten?
Municipal buildings and grounds.
I have ten thousand. You have ten thousand?
I have ten. And that's, that's intended to fix roofs and things like that. Whatever is over ten thousand dollars compared at this time, that, that was written as anything over ten thousand, do we want to keep that, that one? I think it's a good idea. Is that another question that's right there handy, I wonder?
Yep, she should be.
If it is, we could copy it, somebody can read it up, figure out what, what number.
Already questioned, you don't need the exact question for the ballot, you just need, you need to vote on what you're gonna put in that line.
Right.
Well, if we, yeah, but all of them.
The questions are already gonna be written up by your clerk, they're already done.
But I'm also allowing this to go on the ballot at the same time, that's the intent here.
Your only intent is to put the number in.
Right.
So that's all.
I don't know what happened, but I've been doing that all day.
You can sit here and quote those all you want, that's fine, but I'm just telling you.
That way, it's, it's already written for everybody, that's all.
Right there.
So the number remains the same on buildings and grounds? A and? Both degree?
Both.
Ten thousand?
Yeah, we need to do a vote on each one of these.
That's right.
So I'll make the law, and you second the motion.
Yeah, bridges, ten thousand.
No.
No.
No, wait.
No, buildings.
Talking about buildings.
Municipal buildings and grounds.
This is ten, too, though, Paul.
It is?
Yeah.
I got it written down, it's less than five.
I got ten. I got forty.
I got a headache.
No idea what it was, so give me one of those pieces of paper. I have bridges, it's ten thousand. Wait, you're still voting on the first one, I think we passed it, right?
Can we, yeah, they haven't made the second on the motion yet, Mary, so don't, don't let them get past that, or else it won't.
Mine's wiped off the paper, that's why.
Oh, now, okay.
All right. Just as long as you say what it is, I'll get it.
Royce, you are municipal buildings and grounds for ten thousand.
Yeah, let's finish that one, okay? Paul, I think, said yes.
I have ten, Royce.
No, Paul has not seconded the motion.
No, I thought I did.
Did I make the motion?
You made the motion, Paul needs to second it.
You need to second the motion, and then we need to vote.
Motion for what?
Buildings and grounds, ten thousand.
Ten thousand for that, okay?
Passed.
My hand's up.
Get your next one.
Touche, Paul.
There's road paving, which has gone to seventy, no, no, yes. No, we have to call them, never mind, don't, don't pay attention to me, road paving is a hundred and fifty thousand, you have that?
We got that.
So you need to make a motion on that.
Any discussion on it?
Nope.
That allows us to pave the road basically every year?
Mine, too.
Yours is private road.
Shut up, not helping us.
You only get part of it, if it's decided to pave your, your part of your road.
Didn't ever pave it.
Okay, uh, so I'm gonna make the motion that we accept. Give out of a hundred and fifty thousand. And place it on the ballot for brick, for paving. C P, C I P.
You agree, Paul? Okay. Bridges, I have ten thousand. Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, we have to.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, gonna do the vote.
Have to finish with the first one, Mary.
I know, so it's supposed to be this one and this one.
Randy's all excited because they're on a roll, she wants to slow down.
Slow down, pass that, right, but, yes.
Yes, they did.
Nobody's asking any questions up here that I can't answer.
Bridges. And?
Ten thousand again.
The bridges.
Royce, can I ask a question on that one, please? Do you want to leave that at ten thousand with the possibility of, uh, New Bridge Road money being needed? Because you're gonna have to come up with some money there for that New Bridge Road, we, we've got a number from the state, and we're on the two thousand eighteen, nineteen ballot, Ben's shaking his head no, so he may be able to explain that, but I don't.
I've got, see nothing on here that says anything about New Bridge, so therefore I'm not.
So you don't need the money for it?
I'm not gonna include anything about New Bridge in my motion.
Why, I see an email come through, or something, posted, somebody said something, that, uh.
I haven't seen any actual money.
No, Ron Collins said that the state was covering it, if it was done.
I didn't see that.
I don't know anything about that, that was just recent.
I seem to recall something about that.
When did he say that, Ben?
That's quite a while.
I, I heard something, too, that there was.
When did he say that?
December, maybe?
Yeah, but we've met with him since then.
The bridge, and it was coming up.
Let's just do the.
Yeah, they changed it.
Covering all the costs, is what he meant.
I didn't say that.
Well, the governor hasn't had a C S, so.
That's right, because when he sat in here, he talked about Lebanon's portion being thirty thousand, when he sat in here. So I don't know where we're getting thirty thousand.
He changed that to covered bridges, because they want that bridge to be a covered bridge.
Who does?
You didn't read that? Nothing, it was just in a last week.
Oh, Lord have mercy.
They want it to be a covered bridge, this way no one can go on top and jump into the.
I haven't heard anything mentioned in the town, anything about meetings about a covered bridge.
Neither have I.
Can I go ahead with the motion?
Yes.
I don't care what you do, I just made a suggestion.
I make a motion that we accept the ten thousand dollars. And place it on the ballot for.
Don't put accept.
Bridges, well, then do something.
Raise and appropriate.
Right.
What he said, that's your motion, now you say it.
Raise and appropriate amount of.
To place in a capital reserve fund for necessary bridge repairs and replacement of town road bridges.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And you can add that down to Mary if you want her to copy it, like, like it is, I'm just, that's one last thing Dale's gonna do when she reads it up.
Really?
She's still gonna do it?
No, this is already typed up, Dale already has it, I, I typed it way back when, so all she's gonna do is go.
Check.
And put the number in.
It's the same number, it's not changing.
Okay, all she's gonna do is put the number in there.
Right, so I don't need that, and I don't, we need to stay, we do need this.
And we did.
Royce, did you say that, I didn't see he's going.
I second the motion, and we need to vote on it.
Yes.
Or we vote on?
What you just said.
The bridge, yeah.
Yeah. Did, I'm sorry, did you gentleman vote on the, the highway equipment over ten thousand?
Not yet.
Okay, all right, I'm, that's the next one?
That's the one coming up now.
Oh, right.
It's the one that's left, as I can see here.
Yes, it is the one that's left. Over ten thousand. Jim's gonna be typing this stuff up?
No. I think so, Dale's doing it.
I mean, Dale.
Dale will type it.
Now, this one, we need to word equipment in, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And over ten thousand, and.
I've already been down that road, so. All right, so you want to do a motion, you want me to vote?
No, you do.
Okay. I'm, I make a motion that we. Use the seven hun, yeah, raise and appropriate the seven, uh, seventy-five thousand. For highway equipment.
Over ten thousand.
Over ten thousand dollars. Costing, costing over hot ten thousand. And that's seventy-five.
You need a second on that.
Yeah, I need a second on that motion, if anybody's got one.
I'm thinking.
Okay.
Oh, oh, oh.
Uh, to raise seventy-five thousand for highway equipment costing over what?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Makes sense.
Okay, you got it.
Okay, Paul seconded that.
Two hundred and ninety-five thousand total.
Oh, you need to vote on that, so, right?
It's a total.
Okay, both.
An ambulance. What was your name?
We done?
No. C I P is done?
About another hour, we'll be done with this section, then we, then tonight we get to come back and do it all again.
Yeah.
So that kind of takes care of highway, does, does it kind of take care of highway?
No.
It's a proposed, not a budget.
Right.
That's gonna go back to the advisor committee, and the other numbers, you know, we probably should.
You guys will have to be much involved with the back and forth, and see if you can settle on something, if you can't tonight, then you put a number on, they put a number on.
That's right.
We'll have to leave it at that, and just, I, I think we can come to the agreement with the seventy-five thousand being held up, I think we can pretty much.
Let's see how it works out tonight.
Last night they were pretty receptive, I thought.
I think so, too.
Let it go around and around, where do you want me to sit tonight when I come in? Because I, when I, I need to have power, yeah, besides that, yeah.
On your butt, okay.
I'll sit next to you.
Come on.
What was that, Paul, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Paul, did you say something, Paul?
She doesn't know where I've been.
Did you say something?
Yeah, she lets you move along.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, and I just wanted to.
Let's go, pick something.
Okay, the assessor.
Oh, boy.
Assessing agent, has to be correct. Has to be correct.
I wasn't wording it, I was just.
I know, but I'm just saying, yeah, I, I've seen that come through and come through and come through, and I don't know why it hasn't been changed yet, it's for an assessing agent, not for an assessor, unless that's exactly what they mean it to be.
What do you want?
Money, 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 I want the assessing, I, I feel that the assessing agent should actually stay on the general government at this time, because they're going, it's just not gonna work out, when they go see numbers, they, the public is not gonna understand what we're, what we're doing, and I don't think that you two can assess everything in town that needs to be done, or three people, or whatever.
I know what you're saying, okay?
Yeah?
I don't want general government to go down because of the assessor.
I understand what you're saying, it's in there now, though, is it not?
No, it's just token, right?
No.
No, because you guys are still the assessors. You guys are still the, you're still the assessor.
Yeah, but not grand scale like we want to do.
Yeah, you're still a little bit. Yeah, you're still a little bit.
We have to put it in.
You would still have to be signing off on everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why it should be under general government.
Right.
It's the assessing budget and you are the assessors.
Yeah, I realize that, it's just that...
I would just explain to people why it's higher, you know? I wouldn't hide it. I don't think anybody's suggesting to do it, you know?
No, don't hide it.
Well, no, I don't wanna hide it, but it needs to go under general government.
And we have hired, we have hired the assessing agent to assist us because he's, he has the education to do so.
It's also too much.
And the title.
But it's the position, it isn't me. I mean, it may not be me, you don't know, you know what I mean?
Right.
Bid on it.
Yep.
You know, to tell them and make it fair and right. I would think. I mean, you're wrong.
I'm not afraid to bid on it.
Yeah, I would think if you put it to bid, nobody can say anything then.
Right.
They can, they're gonna say something anyway.
Oh, my kid, man. Raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-seven thousand forty dollars to hire a certified assessor on a part-time basis, not to exceed twenty hours a week at a rate of twenty-six dollars per hour.
That was last year's?
No, that's in two thousand one, two oh, two oh seven.
But the way that's worded is also for an assessor. So that's changing the form of government. And then you would create a budget. So it was kinda backwards back at the time anyway. Because I know Christine, what she wanted to do was put on the assessor. She and I talked about that. And I told her that has to be changed ninety days before the annual time. I mean, if you put it in the annual time, meaning it's not effective for a year. So you're still gonna be paying an assessing agent.
And if we use the assessing agent, that does, we don't have to go through all that. We don't have to go through the weight.
Because the town office is going...
Using the words assessing agent.
The assessing agent still falls under your guidance direction.
Yeah.
One hundred percent.
Part of it, I don't understand what you're saying, Ben. We are, we're also overseer of the board. And we got an agent doing it.
Right.
Right, so where's the separate budget?
Right.
Where's the separate budget for that? You don't, it's under general government.
Right. It's whoever you hire for employees. That's your employment budget. It's not specifically broken out for each employee, you know?
By putting it in as its own article, we are...
I'm just saying...
We're separating it in, in under, we're separating it under general government, which is okay, because if they voted it down, you still keep your, you still keep your selectmen.
I don't understand that at all. Um, sorry.
You're still keeping your selectmen as, as assessors, just like they are now.
They are anyway.
Right.
So what you're gonna do, what you've done, okay? Is you have, you've taken over and put assessing over here. Okay, if that fails, I don't, I'm not gonna try to suppose to people's minds, if that fails, you have cut yourselves down to twenty thousand. You've cut yourselves down by a thousand hours in this office. Okay? Three hundred hours for the year per selectman, plus, three hundred thirty-three plus. Okay? So where's your assessing gonna be done? You're not fulfilling the duties of the office now, having sat there. It's not getting done. Okay? You have stuff that's fallen through the cracks, seriously. Okay? And you, so you're not doing it. I'm afraid that if you cut yourself so far down at twenty thousand, I know you're trying to give away the assessing, but what I'm saying is, you can't handle it all, he can't handle it all, you guys gotta work it and you cut yourselves short. And I'm afraid that, yeah, great, assessing falls and general government passes, yay. But you cut yourself so short that you're gonna be in trouble. So if you wanna keep them separate, put yourselves back up. So you at least have money to get the job done.
Right.
What you're saying is that...
Because that's been cut. Because general government has been, the assess, the selectmen's pay has been
Cut.
Cut. Needs to go back where it was. Put this on as an assessing agent.
Into general government.
Okay, they're trying to keep them separate.
And that's, and that's, and that's putting you to, that's putting you to work for town, but under the selectmen, which is what you're doing now.
What should be done is putting it under general government because you're not hiring a brand new department.
Right.
Okay, but it should be put under general government. Keep yourselves low at the twenty or whatever. If you feel that's what you guys should be doing, that's twenty, that's up to you.
I didn't agree with that.
But I'm just saying, if you were to put in at forty thousand, that's, that's a bubble for you to put it out to bid and say, hey, alright, you know, Mr. CMA, what are you gonna give us for that forty thousand? This is, you know, you don't even have to tell them that. You don't even have to put a number on the bid. But I'm saying is, you can, you can you got a number to play with, okay? I've thrown a bid on another town, okay? And it's too high for what they wanna do, you know? Um, that's fine, I'm gonna talk to them, et cetera, et cetera. But what I'm saying is, someone might bid, well, I bid forty-two thousand dollars and I'll be there one day a week. And you might have somebody else that comes in at thirty-nine thousand dollars and I'll be there two days a week, cause I'm gonna give you uh, more hours for less, less per hour, you know what I mean? So that's up to you guys to go, hey, okay, let's, let's interview this person, see if they're gonna work, be a good fit. But you at least have a budget to work from. As an assessing agent. My opinion, I'm not against putting the assessor question. I mean, you have towns, okay, half the size of us, even less than that, that have more done on the assessing end. Uh, you know, they're better organized, there's, there's a lot of work, a lot needs to be done. You know that.
So far, it's looking like a whole paragraph to, to write, to explain.
Well, it shouldn't be.
Can we make it?
That's at the public...
Can we make it more simple?
That's at the informational meeting. You better decide what you wanna do and then explain what you've done. And that's at the hearing.
Is there a date on that already?
Really? I think what we're really asking, to be honest with you, is that we need the assessing agent to be there. He's already working with us. And we may need to be paid this year. That's, that's out of general government, is.
Right, currently, yep.
However, you're out, you're not a selectman.
No.
So somehow we need to just keep it like, keep it like that as a, as an ass...
No.
As we started this off as an assessing agent.
Working.
Then if this is, if this fails in the, if this fails in the vote, you've still got selectmen who are working, but we need, we do need to put out our budget back where it was.
What I'm getting at, you're, you're assuming that it's gonna be bad. Your life, no, no, I'm not, no, I'm just...
I didn't say it was bad.
I'm gonna have to bid it. That's what I'm getting at.
Have you guys put it up to bid? If that bore, who knows who it would be, really?
You don't have nothing to show here.
I think it should be up to bid, I'm not afraid to bid. I know the town...
No, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, I'm not trying to, you know, make a job for myself, which is kinda like out there with the lies on Facebook. Yes.
I never said that, it was crap.
I was looking at the camera, not you. But, uh, you know, no, it needs to be put up to bid and it doesn't matter whether it's me or whatever, but that's, that's a totally different story. But you guys should put it under general government. Because that's what your, your intention is to not do assessing.
It's there now.
Your intention is to sign, have somebody else do the work and sign off on it.
That's not my intention.
Understood, but I mean, as the board that's been sitting in this office...
I was elected to do a job here. A lot of that job description is assessing.
But you also agreed to take me on, so yes and no.
As an agent.
Correct, but who's doing the work?
Both of us.
You know what I'm saying?
I do know what you're saying.
But the point being that...
The way I've seen it, is that we work together so that we could get assessing done.
Yeah, whatever, I mean...
At least in the case of you and I.
Whatever, I mean, whatever, I don't care, whatever. What I'm saying is, your board has hired someone to do it because it's not getting done by the board. Okay, just as I've said, okay, you're putting numbers on COAT stuff right now. You do not have the authority to put a number on that without a second from somebody else.
Right.
Okay, which isn't me.
Right.
Okay? You are a board of assessors.
That's right.
So when I come in here...
So we're still doing it within the law.
When I...
Keep that one going.
My job is to make sure it's happening.
Right.
You know, no fourth year back abatements, for example. Okay?
And...
Okay?
Well...
So that's my point. Is you're making the choice now to hire, to bring somebody else in to help with the assessing. You now have to decide, we don't wanna do that, you're gonna do it yourself. Or you are gonna do that. If you are gonna do that...
Why can't we do what we're doing right now?
What is that?
I have a question.
Well, what we're doing right now is we are using an assessing agent to assist us.
I'm not talking to you as assessing, I'm talking to you as a former selectman. Okay, so what I'm saying to you is, you're setting up a budget to fail and I'm fine with that. That's up to the people. But you've, you've cut yourself so low, if you keep them separate, you've cut yourselves so low, you can't get the job done.
Well, I didn't vote for that either.
Well, I don't care, that's between you and Paul. And I've been there with two selectmen and you guys are gonna bash heads and figure it out. Because I did with two selectmen. You know, there is no tiebreaker. You guys...
No quitting.
Someone's gonna have to come in.
In other words, if we put the forty's up in general government...
Then reduce your wages.
Right, I understand that.
Yep.
But then we can lose everything.
I don't think that's gonna happen, but...
You don't think it'll happen?
No.
Okay, we'll do it that way.
I can assume.
I have a question. Is there a separate line for the assessor in the general government?
There's never been one. Uh, that's kinda screwy this year, if you will, in my opinion, but it needs to go...
It needs to have a separate line.
Yep.
Right.
And I'm, I still think that you're still not gonna, from what I see, and I know Deborah's gonna say I shouldn't say anything, but I still think that the selectmen's wages have, I mean, have to go up. Look at what's not done. I mean, even despite the fact that the assessing isn't done, I bet you could spend
And we're not really talking...
Eight weeks here.
We're not, you were not even talking to change in the hourly wage, you were talking about the amount of hours that the selectmen can spend.
Need to go back where it was and put the hour, a separate line in for the assessor and I don't think they ever...
An explanation.
That will be at the meeting. An explanation. This is why it's done.
Well, what I was thinking, maybe, uh, I talked, I talked to Mike with the sample ballot at the hearing. Have a sheet with explanation.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Great idea.
For example, uh, at the transfer station, we take in what, forty thousand? But nobody knows about it.
Right.
That's a good idea, yes.
Right.
And people don't understand, right.
I've been here fifty-two years and I had to guess.
That's what it comes down to, is, is explaining it to the public. That's why I think fail is the more explained.
You're absolutely right.
I told Mike, I said, if you get out and you give a, a long speech,
No good.
When they leave, they don't remember. But they're gonna take that sample ballot with them, we're gonna pass them out. There it is.
With an explanation. I agree with you.
I agree too.
I think the more information, the more...
How does that feel?
The more votes they can make.
Absolutely.
Right, I agree.
Really? Yeah, yeah, calm down.
Want some water?
Yeah, what happened?
Something went down.
Well...
No, a sudden...
It wasn't down that fast?
Something didn't go down.
Okay, we'll do it that way.
Yeah, I'd like to see somebody word it. I think that's an excellent idea.
I'd like to see somebody word it. So you're making a motion?
Oh, where's the other side?
Look at the eyes, look at the eyes go around everyone.
We're all sitting here in the dark.
You just made it.
We need to, um, put it in general government, then we'll vote the general government.
Right.
Right then.
And scratch that separate assessors
Fix those two.
thing because you guys are the assessors.
Right.
Well, it's confusing me to keep seeing assessor, these people giving money for an assessor because you're not paying an assessor. You're paying an assessing agent. And, and, and it keeps getting written everywhere, assessor, assessor.
Honestly, I believe your former chair thought that was gonna be put in July first. And you can't do that by law.
No.
I think the budget was being created, that's not true.
Also...
Right.
I'm speaking. Also, in that explanation, put in it, it'll go up to bid.
That, that's what we could do.
Mm-hmm.
I think that, that shows fan, complete and absolute openness and fairness. And that's what people want.
Right.
If they read it.
And so basically, I mean, realistically, you've fallen into something. You guys called me back to finish the waterfront. This is how this works.
Yeah, thanks.
So, so I already, already had two years going, so I mean, that's why Christine, whoever, I wasn't here, I don't know, I wasn't here. But, uh, you know, I was called back to come back here and finish the waterfront.
Right.
So we did, you helped me with that. Uh, you know, and then what falls pattern after that is all your abatements. So what are you gonna do? You know, are you gonna answer all those abatement requests and, and, you know, so that's where we're at. So now that brings us up to here, April third, but now Sue's left. So now you have all that assessing, fifty percent of her job was that.
Yep.
So that's why I was in here the other night. You want me to pick that up? You know, because I'm not looking for the extra per se, but honestly, if you hired, hired an assessing agent, maybe you'd do anything. You would have no other assessing agent walking in here and adding that.
At the present time, we do need your expertise for that.
But, but...
Because there's nobody in the select office that can, that can go through and all that.
Getting tired yet, Nana?
I would be bidding it.
Tired yet?
I'd bid it soon.
That is part of what you think, Paul.
I'd bid it soon.
But we settled that the other night.
Yeah, you need to get the bid out there.
If it was settled, then it wouldn't have come up as a question right now.
But I would bid it soon. Okay, because April first is Christmas for assessing.
Right.
So that's a big day, you know? And you got, bing, 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 between that and tax payment. You've got a lot to do, so I'd bid it soon if you're going to.
I can use a little bit of help putting that motion together, or you can put the...
Okay, we need to...
What's the...
General government? The next one, and that's what we'll...
Well, wait a minute, they have to finish this one, Betty.
That's right.
Please.
When we vote for general government?
That's right, absolutely.
The most important thing is write the explanation.
Yeah, you said it. That's right, that is the most important thing, right? The explanation, so that it's, it's clear and gives a direct...
We make a motion to make sure this comes on, that the assessing agent comes under the general, under the heading of general government. And... Is that where it all stops?
No.
That's where it stops. That's where that stops. Cause when we go general government, you're gonna bring back the...
Put that money into the weight, right.
With an explanation. At the, at the...
Oh, yes.
It's gonna be on a separate sheet.
At the hearing, at the town hearing.
Yeah, but that doesn't have to be part of your motion.
With an explanation at the, at the town hearing.
Plus the sample ballot. When we pass them out, there'll be an explanation.
The motions just keep getting longer and longer. It didn't have to be part of the motion.
You don't just pass out sample ballots.
I know, but right now you're working on the motion. And the motion should only be that you put the assessing agent back under general government. It doesn't have to be all that in the motion.
I know. So you want it done without an explanation?
No, just the motion only has to be to move the assessing agent back into general government.
Thank you for your opinion.
It's not my opinion.
It is your opinion.
It's not my opinion.
You're not part of the select one.
Oh, just so I come up with a...
I know, you like reminding me on that button.
Under the assessing agent.
I don't care. Put a motion together, six pages long, I don't care what you do.
He's only trying to help me with a paragraph.
Just add the forty thousand to the general government.
God grant me the serenity to accept the things I can, the courage and the wisdom that's in my heart.
Amen, Mary, amen.
I would never run for anything in this town.
Forty thousand with a bid.
We could pass that one, are we going on to general government?
No, we haven't...
No, he hasn't even finished the motion yet, Betty.
Four words here.
The way I understand it, we've got a gentleman over here that has said that he doesn't mind if the job goes up to bid. Or if he goes up to bid, I would put a number on it of forty thousand, the way I see it on...
Oh, my God.
No, no, I wouldn't put a number on it.
And how do we do it? Put a number on it?
So, I would put a number on it.
Forty thousand, okay.
You can still put it up to bid. Okay, if you got someone to bid a hundred thousand, guess what, they didn't get it. If anyone bid thirty nine thousand, they're the only one.
All right, Gina.
But you're gonna have a budget to work from.
I'm about done with this.
Otherwise, you can't put it up to bid, you're creating a budget, so.
It's hard to make, it's hard to.
You're gonna paint your house.
It's hard to make a bid too without, when you've already put a number out here that we're gonna spend.
Follow me, forget you have vinyl, forget you have vinyl. Okay, you're gonna paint your house, are you gonna start calling contractors when you don't have any money or when you have the money to do it?
Correct. So you're also talking this five.
Oh yeah, no, there's smart people like me that go.
That you're putting out, you know, somebody's gonna read it and say.
Yeah, there's smart people like me that will go do their research, it's like, you've got forty grand, yeah, it's thirty nine, nine, ninety nine, 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 absolutely.
Right, ninety eight just.
You don't put it out, Bryce, you know what you're gonna do.
Doesn't mean they're gonna win the bid.
They're not gonna just. No, no, you don't write it on the bid, but as I'm saying, we're taught that this is public knowledge.
Yes, yeah, I would write it on the bid, but what I'm saying to you.
And it can be had with a, with a request.
Don't think I haven't looked at towns to see what they're paying, you know, when I'm, when I'm putting back. Right, because if you're willing to pay the same, yeah, okay, I'll start you and say, I'll, I say forty. That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean Paul's not gonna come along and say, I'll do it for thirty eight, doesn't mean I'm winning the bid.
No, 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 no.
It doesn't mean.
What I'm saying is, but we. Say he comes up.
You have to.
And we say, Ben, how much and what do we get for it?
That's right. That's right.
Because he's not gonna be the only one.
We're gonna hear all this again.
As long as we ask the same thing of every.
You might get one person saying one day a week at thirty nine, I'm gonna say two days a week at forty. Which one's the better deal, you know, a thousand dollar difference, that's our good insight.
We're gonna have an end date.
But you have two days a week, not one.
I learned a lot from us, but you doing the waterfront. I mean, those are, I asked you, you were nearby and it was easy.
Absolutely, yep.
We just move it, keep, I think.
What do we need, second on a motion?
We've got.
I need a de-motion.
Need a motion.
He needs a motion.
The motion, it's not the motion, if I may speak.
I already said forty thousand.
In general government. Put assessing in general government.
That's it.
They voted on it, it's going in later.
We put the assessing agent in.
And the general government, that's all it's.
At forty thousand.
More?
What's the selectmen's wages?
You should.
Selectmen's wages.
What are your selectmen's wages?
Oh, we're gonna go with that right now.
Okay.
That's a whole different thing, right?
Yes, yes.
So that's all, that's all that you have?
Just like tonight, that should be discussed as two separate questions.
Absolutely.
So as you, if you're gonna make a motion and you're gonna move that forty over to general government?
Now we can do general.
I would kill the assessing budget that was proposed.
That's right, dead, gone, out of here, rip it out of the book.
So, are they making a motion?
Yes, they are.
Which says.
You're saying kill it, you're saying take away the selectmen's wages.
No.
No. No.
Okay, so we're still in the twelve dollars an hour, no matter what happens here.
So only focus on.
Just so everybody understands.
I, I think, look at this side of the coin, only look at the assessor, the forty, you guys have separated it as a separate budget.
Yeah.
You are, you're gonna make a motion to move that.
Back where it was.
To general government and not have a separate budget, just as simple as that. Make that motion and you've killed this one and you've moved it over here and that's all you need to do right now.
I said, then I'll go.
Talk about your selectmen's wages.
Yeah, okay.
You get that motion, Mary?
Yes, I do. So Royce is gonna make it.
I know, an hour it took him.
I'm making the motion.
He made it, didn't he, Mary? Okay, he did, he just seconded, seconded it.
Get me in trouble, okay?
Oh, David.
Oh, yeah. It only took you an hour to explain what I told him and he gave me crap about.
It is. Can we do general, general government, please?
Betty's just dying to do general government.
I still think it's the last one we have to do today.
I dare you to bring it up.
We have this.
We'll do it if you bring it up. Let's go to general government.
All right, regular wages.
I hope we get through all that.
Regular wages, there was no problem with the budget committee, the number is one hundred seventy seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty six, with overtime that's been going through the years of two thousand dollars. Selectmen wages.
Wages.
Used, was thirty two thousand dollars, it went down to twenty thousand dollars.
Up to twenty six?
Up to twenty six.
And now we're back to thirty two.
It's gonna be up, back to thirty two.
I, I make a motion that we keep the selectmen's wages at thirty two.
Oh my God.
That's your selectmen's suggestion.
You need to add on, you don't need two selectmen, you need to add on if you're emergency.
We're gonna have a third selectman with the new year.
Right.
It's been thirty two.
Been thirty two for three people except.
Yep.
Do I D A S?
No.
No. Yeah.
I had that wrong.
Uh, the statement was just made, you're gonna have a third selectman with a new year. However, I haven't heard any, or anything being put on the ballot, wait a minute, I haven't heard anything being put on the ballot to fill that seat, that second, that vacant seat in this new year. So is that going on the ballot to fill that seat that has been resigned?
Now you're asking me a question, which way do you want me to go?
I'm asking a question, which started with the statement, I have not heard anything yet put on the ballot to fill the seat from the resigned selectman chairman, Christine Torino.
The selectmen's office is still in process of finding out just exactly where we stand on that issue and as soon as we get an answer, we'll give you one.
So, my question to you.
Me?
No, well, then I'll raise my hand again, yeah, I have to. Thank you, so, and now it remains, if you're not putting that question on the ballot for a third selectman, do, well, he just said he didn't know.
You were doing that, did I?
Well, that's what I just asked you.
The question is.
Lord have mercy.
We're still dealing with the question, this is something that's just happened to us.
Correct.
Give us a few minutes at least to come up with some answers, we have legal things that we have to deal with over this too, ma'am.
I understand.
Okay, so once we get through.
So you want us to fund for three selectmen when you may only have two?
We have a process we have to follow here, okay? And I'm not quite sure of the whole thing yet.
So you want voters to fund for three selectmen when you may only have two?
That's not good.
It's not what, Betty?
No, that's not gonna hap, that's not gonna happen, they just haven't written it, they haven't.
I just asked them if they're gonna put it on the ballot and they have no answer.
It's not on the ballot yet. It's not on the ballot yet. There's no ballot yet.
That's right, there is none, I'm asking them if they're going to put it on the ballot.
I'll try and explain.
Because it's their choice whether they do or they don't.
What's the choice?
They have to call legal.
I, I don't understand, I'm not being a wise guy.
Okay, I know you're not, Paul, and I appreciate you listening. My answer to that is that it's the choice of the selectmen, they can put it on the May ballot, they can put it.
That's a choice, in her opinion.
In my opinion, in reading the law, it's your, thank you, Ben, it's your choice whether it goes on the May ballot to fill her seat for the remaining two years, it's your choice whether or not you wait and put it on November's ballot, it's your choice whether you put it on next year, it's your choice whether you leave it open for the remainder of her term and only operate with two selectmen. Yes, that is, excuse me.
If it's my choice, there's gonna be two openings in May.
Okay, so you're, that's exactly what I was asking, that I'm getting the faces and the head shakings from Royce and not understanding.
You don't need to disturb my attention.
Anybody else. I'm talking to Paul, which is my right. So are you stopping me from speaking to your selectmen?
She is.
Because he asked me a question and I'm speaking to him, are you stopping me from doing that?
Are you stopping me from operating my office here?
No, I'm answering Paul's question. Paul, would you like me to complete my conversation with you, could you ask this chairman to please allow me to finish?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I told you, I like that.
Right, so you're looking to put a question on.
Let me know, will you?
I will, so Paul, you're looking to.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So much.
Paul, you're looking to put a question on the May ballot to fill the vacant seat by Christine Torino.
May I have this back? I am the chairman of the board here, ma'am.
So you're denying my right to continue my conversation?
I'm not denying your right, but you seem to be taking up this whole meeting.
He asked me a question, Roy, you're way out of line.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Paul, I can't complete my conversation with you, I'm sorry. Exactly.
I can't tell Donald Paul, I have nothing to say either. Can we get on with the meeting now?
You can general government, please.
Yes, please.
I'm afraid it aids.
Where are we at with the general government question?
We put selectmen's wages back at the thirty two thou, thirty two thousand, janitorial was four thousand, do you want me to read you?
Sure, sure, go ahead, go ahead, you got it.
Selectmen's wages at thirty two thousand?
Yes. No, 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 selectmen thirty two thousand.
Right.
Okay, janitorial was four thousand, there didn't seem to be any problems with that, travel expenses, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
Whoa, 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 travel is what?
Three thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
Where do they go?
They go to seminars, they go to trainings.
Oh, okay.
Everywhere in the state, they're from, they're everywhere.
What is it, I'm sorry?
Three thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
We haven't seen them go anywhere.
That's for everybody in the office, okay.
Yes, yes, yes. Staff development and training, and that's to pay for the classes, three thousand, two hundred, sound right? Association dues, five thousand, nine hundred and fifty, and payroll taxes, I believe was wrong, it would be, it was fifteen, five, eight, six, and it's actually sixteen, oh, four, five, remember that?
And it changed that back to thirty two. That would have to agree with the thirty two.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right.
That's all.
Thank you.
And you can leave that and change it later, but then I can.
For sales sign?
It'll, it'll be coming up again.
What do you have? I can calculate it real quick.
Oh, it would be all the wages.
Yeah, thirty two thousand.
Thirty two thousand plus the regular wages.
Which is?
One, seven, 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 three, six, overtime, two thousand.
Should be everybody.
Janitorial is really not wages, that's a flat fee, is it not? Yes.
She didn't bid that, she's getting paid now.
It's not a dependent contractor.
Right, it used to be.
Four thousand.
The only requirements that they pay over minimum wage.
Four thousand?
So she's in here for an hour and fifty bucks.
It takes taxes, doesn't matter.
So that's four thousand, yeah, let me just give it to you to make sure you, you can hand it back. What is association? What is association? What do you mean, is association?
Second last one, the five thousand, two hundred and fifty, I think you said, association dues, did you say?
Yes.
What is that?
M M A, uh, different types of things like.
Sixteen thousand, five hundred and four.
Okay, five, I can't write five, eight, four.
General government.
Okay. No, thank you. Supplies, which were, remained at four thousand. Electricity, we put, the budget committee put it down to three thousand because we hadn't spent that much on electricity. The request was for four thousand and the budget committee said three thousand and I think that's because of what was spent.
I, I'd agree with that because I.
It hasn't gone, yes.
It can be, it could be moved for another line if we had to, there's sure to be something.
Three thousand then? Okay, thank you. Phone, six thousand, same. Propane, four hun, four thousand, the same, streetlights, twenty one thousand, the same. Office equipment repairs then taken out, building maintenance was eight thousand, is that what we wanna do? Eight thousand was recommended.
That's what you guys came up with, too?
Yeah, I don't think that there was much question about that, do you remember being a question, I've got question marks, but I don't have.
There were some questions about it, Betty, but when it came up, I think it was Ben that brought it up, that just to paint and all that stuff was quite costly and I think we all decided to leave it the same.
And radio maintenance, there isn't.
No.
I think eight thousand's too much for the building.
Well, if we, if we put the parking lot under the building, we really could stand to have that parking lot lined out here. And that's something we were gonna do a couple, three years ago, just a short, just a thought. I might bring that up.
Parking lot lines?
It's Ben five, it's Ben five, so I guess why did it go to eight this year? My guess is somebody was confused about the painting that was done last year.
Right, 'cause that's what was discussed, actually, was the painting.
Right, but that was already done, so it's gonna be a couple of years out before that needs to be done again.
Right.
Right, it's not like we're putting it in the C I P.
And we could use some paint.
And it was only eight thousand because of the mess that was on the building that had to be.
Correct.
Chemicals stripped and all that, which won't be the case next time.
So you wanna go five thousand?
I have no opinion, I'm just saying history.
Five thousand?
Split it, pay in.
What do you think, Paul?
What if the heating system croaks all of a sudden?
Okay.
There's no extra money.
Let's go with five thousand. Ten thousand for the pay five?
Seventy eight hundred, seventy eight hundred.
So you can put the selectman down for five thousand on that.
Five thousand.
Building maintenance?
Yes, five thousand. Office equipment, two thousand, seven hundred. It's been up from fourteen, fifteen, is two sixty three, in fifteen, sixteen, they had twelve hundred. Fifteen, seventeen, request of two thousand, seven hundred.
Question.
I don't know what they would need.
Can you add to that?
What, for the third workstation?
I think, is that gonna, we haven't reached the budget line for that yet.
No, that's office technology.
We don't need to do that anymore.
No, you don't?
No, 'cause the money's already there.
Yeah, the money's always there this year.
So you want us, equipment, fifty thousand percent?
That'll go back to that famous fifty eight hundred that keeps coming up.
Oh, yeah. One of my favorite numbers.
Yeah, I'm not gonna ask, she's getting too tired.
Do you think two thousand, seven hundred is enough for office equipment? I mean, what do you need, what, is really, is, is your equipment fairly new or is it?
It's still.
Dying old?
I don't know, we bet.
What's on my line? What expenses, what was listed?
Yeah.
What were the expenses on it?
Yeah, I mean, what are we talking about, printers, computers, office staples and.
Everything always has to get upgraded.
Yeah, there wouldn't be staples, wouldn't be office equipment, there would be supplies.
Well, we're talking equipment, not supplies, you're right.
I'm not sure what's gonna move and change this year, that's why I asked.
Yeah, we're talking equipment, not supply.
Right.
Where am I gonna find it? Oh, I hate this pick.
One too.
Supply, oh, no.
No, equipment.
What happens if you don't put enough money aside and then something big breaks, you have some other place you can take it from?
That's when you scramble, you see if, you're looking at the budget first and see if we can come out of another spot and fill our paper on it.
Office equipment, all right.
What was some of the things?
Two computers, three hundred and thirty nine, displays to go, displays to go sign, whatever. Displays to go sign, I don't know what that means. Oh, that was a negative, all right, uh, office suite for T C com, two hundred and fifty dollars. Two computers, Microsoft Office.
You already have computers.
Hard drive.
So it's technology ones.
Hard drive.
That's our technology stuff.
A binding machine.
Oh, yeah, the book binding machine.
Do you have a book binding machine?
Yeah, yeah, did it ever get used to a.
It's come to use for town reports this year.
Wow, can I use it? Okay, so those are some of the things I purchased.
Did you ever use one?
No, it sounds like fun, it looks like they got new computers, uh, just about.
I know Mandy did and then.
Well, that would be just up there, I think Mike's is on.
Oh, Mike's, it was, but I'm not sure.
Oh.
I mean, it was.
Mike, so he's, I thought he was asking for a new one this year.
I don't remember.
On his budget, Betty.
I thought he was asking, you think he might.
It could be, I don't remember if it was done, I knew there was an issue there, I just don't remember.
Why is that always an issue?
It's everybody's business.
Anything you have to go around with you?
Even us little citizens.
Printers?
I mean, that stuff like that has been here for a long time.
Yeah. Right.
It could very well die, that's a six hundred dollar piece of equipment, so.
If that goes down, doesn't it count?
And one people are using it now, so.
How old's your fax machine? Kinda old.
Fax machines?
Yeah. Well, the fax is.
That's the one up there. Yeah.
That's eighty bucks.
Oh, you're probably talking other stuff.
Do you think it should go up?
How much? For this line? Not for the, uh, fax machine.
Pickup. Hiccup.
Oh, I don't know, I don't know.
How much was it?
Hiccup.
Quite expensive.
I'm gonna write that down.
I think they probably...
Depends on what you're getting.
Looks like they purchased about all of them.
Hundred twenty bucks off.
But I think that you could...
Well, I think we're gonna find computers are still tied, there's still, there's still gotta be at least one or two out there that's...
Twenty-seven hundred, take care of it, is that?
They do stuff in the office for about fifty-eight, I think, this year that's there. And I don't know where you're at, 'cause you're out of money for supplies in the office, so you might have to do some moving around.
The way I've understood the discussion to go, this, this server, I don't think, I don't see it staying.
No, that's next year.
That'll hit it.
Right.
That's next year, but anyway. That's not for the server, that's for replacing the computer that's acting on the server, which is smoking and blowing the, uh...
Right.
Which is also blowing the server.
That may happen as early as this week.
Interesting.
That may happen as early as this week, haven't I all go? Because it is starting to act up, so.
Good, you can go out, or you can, whatever you say.
I wouldn't, why would you go out?
No, it seems like it's fine.
So, you could probably leave it, what was it at?
Two thousand, seven hundred.
I think we would at that. Leave it at that. You've got a, office machines do break.
Oh, they sure do.
And we do use them.
Two thousand, seven hundred, okay. Photocopiers, two thousand, it's up a thousand.
Is that for the ink? Is that the ink? Does that matter, is that a rental type thing?
Contract.
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 It's a contract.
Yep.
Monthly maintenance, monthly maintenance, monthly maintenance, yeah, that's nothing we can do without. Building security.
Protection one.
Looks to me like it's protect one, yeah.
Protection one.
Yeah, okay, that, I'm sorry, that's thirteen-twenty-five. Software annual license is sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
It is, but it is. And technology maintenance. Five thousand is what we have here, and then I have a question mark here to go to twelve thousand.
Is the twelve-five down below on a different line?
Is it?
Didn't they put that way down?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Should be, yeah, it should be in office technology, correct?
There's an audit here.
No, not audit.
Tech, new server, five thousand, was twenty thou... Twelve K, oh, yes, down to technology. Yes, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That's right, that goes down to here, so this is twelve thousand here, right? Okay, so, technology stays at five thousand. Is the whole of technology moving? Is it gonna be two columns of technology? Technology, maintenance, and technology, two different ones. So one's is five thousand.
One's the purchase of equipment, one's maintaining it.
Okay, maintaining it is twelve thousand. Okay.
No, ba... That's backwards. That's backwards. Purchasing the, yeah, the, the technology should be twelve thousand, the technology maintenance should be five thousand.
You know, I'm looking at it, technology maintenance, and I'm reading them backwards, that's okay.
That's okay, I'm over here with no book, and I know the difference.
Okay, um, shredding to one more. Okay.
I'm donating my time as an assessor, working while I'm listening.
That's good.
You gonna say, you gonna find us a way there so we can get through this?
Bank fees were five hundred, um, the recommendation is to go up to a thousand. I think it was, they had made that suggestion. You're gonna defend your suggestion to go up to a thousand, Ben?
What do bank fees?
Bank fees.
Bank fees, 'cause you, you guys haven't taken out the tan this year, so it shows a zero expense.
That's right.
It's a thousand dollars, I believe it was, and I don't have it in front of me, I believe it was a thousand bucks. And if it wasn't, if it was less than a thousand, then there was also those, there's other fees that we had in the past.
We better keep that money.
There's no fees, there's no fees with the account, but there's...
So we're gonna go up to a thousand. Postage is eight thousand, that goes, it's just up, it's up six hundred. Printing, five thousand. Last time, six thousand, they went down.
Whoa, was that taken down this year?
Yep, it was a thousand, it's been down from...
From six thousand.
Fifteen-seventeen with a thousand.
That gets into some of these special, oh, gosh, different ones, is it? We still get some machines around, cost a lot of money for the ink cartridges. Is that the ones?
No, except for coming up under supplies, but your printing would be, uh, anything you wanna mass produce and send out to the public.
Right, like mailers and stuff.
Yeah.
So they took it down to five thousand from six thousand.
Well, that's the stuff that announces your elections.
No, that's under elec... Is that under elections, Ben?
No.
No?
I get a feeling it was.
I have a feeling it was too.